Good evening, everyone. I would like to go ahead and call the meeting of the Placerville City Council for August 27th to order and ask you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, and welcome to everyone here this evening, and welcome to all our dedicated department heads and staff members. Appreciate your attendance this evening. I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and move on to Item Three, Announcements and Presentations to the Public. This evening we have just 3.1, which is brief comments by city council members. I will start with Councilmember Taylor. Kara, did you have anything to share this evening?
Sure. I had a chance to check out the hot team in action at their Trailer Days at Walmart. That's the homeless outreach trailer team. And it was really great to see the county and Placerville Police Department, as well as local nonprofits, working together to try to provide some services and outreach to our homeless population. And Patty was there, so that was fun. And then I went on a housing tour with SECOG with Dennis Thomas, and we saw several examples of how different cities around Sacramento are meeting their affordable housing needs, mostly with nonprofit developers, which is really interesting. And then I -- the Cannabis Committee met yesterday and spent 10 hours interviewing cannabis applicants.
Oh, my goodness.
So, that's all I have to report out.
How many applicants was that, Kara?
That was six.
10 hours for six applicants. That is a long applicant day.
It was thorough.
Thank you very much for your hard work on that. That is not an easy task. Councilmember Borelli?
Well, as Kara indicated, we both were there at the hotspot, and I was impressed. I just -- I'll tell you what I was mostly impressed with, is the enthusiasm of the people that are trying to help out. I mean, it was wonderful. And the Sheriff's Department, and Police Department, the Fire Department, and then all the volunteers, and I was -- I really came away with kind of a really good feeling. So, I just want to thank all those folks for the efforts.
Thank you very much. I know, we appreciate you taking the time to go and -- we're all invited to all these things, but we're also all spread out all over the place, so we can't all cover them. So, appreciate your attendance at that for us. Councilmember Thomas, did you have any comments this evening?
Well, I did -- today I actually met with Woodrow Deloria, who is the Executive Director for our Transportation Commission, and we basically kind of batted around all the ideas going on with the Highway 50 bypass and how that is -- what that looks like, the timeline for that. It's, you know, we -- I may not be around when that comes to fruition. You know, that's 20, 30 years ago we started on that, and now here we are, starting to think about doing it again, and it's a 20-year project, it looks like. So, I also met with Daniel DiMonte, who is the -- I don't know, he works for El Dorado County Health and Human Services, and he is running the homeless, the Opportunity Knox Program, the COC, Continuum of Care. And we talked a lot about where and how the money is being spent. I wish I could give you all the nitty-gritty details. You know, we're looking at $2 million. And I've always had -- I've had a little bit of a, you know, sore spot because we're not seeing it in our community and how it's being spent. But after meeting with him, I do trust that they have a trajectory that will start in the process of meeting the needs of those that are really challenged in our community. And so, we'll stay in touch. I will be on the Opportunity Knox Board going if they appoint me. It's coming up for appointment here, and I offered up to participate on that board, so we'll see how that goes. Listened to Senator Dolly at the Chamber Luncheon. That was entertaining, and a lot of good information on the state. I hope he does well in this position. And, of course, I was on the housing tour, and one of the things I learned for the housing tour is, one of the few of them were also Housing First models. And it really required a lot of participation and from a lot of different nonprofits. It wasn't just one of them had like six different funding sources, and it cost $27 million to build the facility. And what it takes to do those types of things is just -- it's a phenomenal feat. And they have staff in the -- especially in Roseville, they have staff dedicated to just this one thing. And I don't know that Pierre has the resources or time to apply to that.
That's what I was just going to ask you, is it's kind of like oranges and apples. We just don't have.
It really is. It was an eye-opener to what it takes to run one of those. And I don't -- my expectation is, it's not the city that will be doing this, it'll be the county, and it'll be our participation. But, you know, that's one of the reasons why I'm so interested in what's going on with Opportunity Knox, is that that is going to be the catalyst project that's going to help facilitate this in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Just a couple of things, and really, it's just to give some recognition to folks, I wanted to thank Lighted Candle for the work they were doing today up on Upper Broadway, clearing out, I know, a lot of trash out there, so thank you for those efforts. And then, for what we've all seen over the past couple of weeks have been the sporadic fires that have popped up throughout the county and here in the city, that our great El Dorado County Fire Department has done marvelous work in getting it under control fast and quick before we had more problems. And so, I know we'll probably talk a little bit more about that later, but wanted to just recognize them for those efforts. And then, lastly, I'm going to sit on an ad hoc committee out of SECOG that's going to look at -- so, this year, we had gone to the legislature to ask for, it was like $700 million for the entire region to help with the greenhouse gas emissions to hit our goals and make those reductions when it came to transportation. Well, it's asking for $700 million for the Sacramento region is basically like asking for $10 trillion. I mean, it was probably going to always be a pretty heavy lift. A lot of people did a lot of work, but it--
You're asking the feds or the state?
For the state, yeah. It would have been new general fund dollars. Needless to say, we got a whopping zero out of that request. But in order for us to hit our numbers, it's built into the -- into our numbers out of SECOG that we will get funding from the state in order to meet those goals. And so, we kind of have to figure out something with them, otherwise, the entire region's going to be off. But, you know, we won't be the only ones. I think there's a lot of places across the state that are going to be in a similar situation. But that being said, I'm going to work with Councilmember Free out of Davis. We're going to kind of head up the legislative team to look at what we can do lobbying-wise, try to go back, look at what we can do, what's realistic, and then what we can do for the region. So, stay tuned, more information on that. I was sort of volunteered to do that, and that's fine.
Why didn't we get any -- why did we get Saragosa?
It was a budget augmentation ask, basically, so it was not anything programmed. So, nobody else got anything either.
Okay, nobody, okay.
But it was an additional ask out of the general fund.
Well, right away, I'm thinking, there's that rural thing again.
Yeah, no, exactly. We're getting left behind. No, it was -- and we still kind of do, because we're even -- not only are we rural, but we're also not either Los Angeles or San Francisco.
Exactly.
And so, this whole middle region kind of gets left behind, even though we're the state capital. So, we have a lot of work to do there in order to make sure we meet our regional needs. So, I'll be bringing back more information.
And again, thank you both for your volunteering and following through on all these various activities that are behind-the-scenes things to make sure that we get the tax dollars back here. Couple of things that I would like to note. Congratulate Goldbug Park and the Development Committee for another successful Murder in the Mine event. I understand they had a sold-out event this past Saturday. They sold 70 tickets, and with the cooperation of a couple of local theater groups, had a very successful fundraising event out at the park. I'd like to take a minute also to, again, recognize the entire Placerville Police Department team that was involved in our National Night Out event just three weeks ago. It does indeed take the entire force, and, again, I think we continue to set the standard for quality evening and allowing our community to engage with the police department. And I know there was a -- there's always a lot of before and behind-the-scenes work that goes into making that National Night Out seem just seamless. So, Chief, thank you, and please extend that on behalf of the council to all of those that were involved in that. And we look forward to finding out how we rank this year in the national standings, and hopefully, we will continue with our higher ranking. So, also, I received an email in the stream today from Caltrans, and it's notifying us that, and this is not terribly new, but they are going to be closing Highway 50 again. And there will be a community workshop Caltrans is holding here at Town Hall on Wednesday, September 4th, from 5:30 to 6:30. It's here at Town Hall, Wednesday, September 4th, and that has to do with a complete closure of Highway 50 at Echo Summit. They anticipate 14 days beginning in late September.
What? Echo Summit?
That's all the information that is in the handout. Now, if you've gone up there lately, this has been an ongoing process.
They're presenting ulterior, so, you know.
They are -- this is not the first time that they have done this, and we have survived. And I wish that this was 2020 that they were proposing it, but I don't see any indication that it isn't this September. And I do know that they have a lot of contractors on site right now redoing the old bridges that you can't really see, because you can't see them from above. So, this, I believe, is the final phase of this project. So, if you want more information, again, that is on Wednesday, the 4th of September, here at 5:30. So, be alert for that. And I used to get real angry with Caltrans, but they do have a pretty effective communication team. I still get angry at them for other reasons. But this one, hopefully, will be the last Tahoe close. So, we will see what happens, and it desperately needs to be restored.
This is a real tough one to keep the road open. You know, it's really in a bad spot.
Hopefully, that will go smoothly, and we'll get all of our questions answered in just a few days. So, with that, we will go ahead and move on to Item Four, which is a closed session report. And I believe Mr. Driscoll is not with us this evening, but we are going to ask for our city manager to step into his shoes and announce closed session.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. In closed session, council considered a tentative agreement with our unified confidential and supervisory employee unit, and we reached agreement, a tentative agreement with them, which includes a 3% increase that was effective January 1 of this year, and then two other increases in January of '20 and January '21 based on the CPI. Those are the basic provisions of the agreement. The formal agreement will be coming back to you at a later date.
Thank you, Clive. Takes us on to Item Five, Adoption of Agenda. If there are no changes to this evening's agenda, is there a motion for adoption?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved to second, and all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Brings us on to ceremonial matters, and this is a proclamation that I've had the honor to read at least once before, and that is a proclamation proclaiming Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequent diagnosed cancer in men and the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in men, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates there will be 174,000-plus new cases of prostate cancer in the United States in 2019, resulting in an estimated 31,620 deaths, and whereas it is estimated 24,500 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and it is estimated 4,400 California men will die from this disease, and whereas African-American men in the U.S. and Caribbean have the highest documented prostate cancer incident rates in the world. Whereas early prostate cancer usually has no symptoms, and studies suggest strong familial predisposition may be responsible for 5% to 10% of the disease, whereas late-stage prostate cancer commonly spreads to the bones, which can cause pain in the hips, spine, ribs, and other areas of the body. Whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 30% when it spreads to other parts of the body. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men have an opportunity, should have an opportunity to make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer based on their personal values and preferences, whereas prostate cancer treatment decisions should be based on clinical recommendations and patient values and preferences. And whereas the City of Placerville joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their health care provider about early detection and testing for prostate cancer, I therefore be it resolved that Mark Acuna, Mayor of the City of Placerville, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Placerville, and do commend this observation to all citizens. Is there someone here this evening to have received the proclamation? I'd be happy to meet you at the podium, and then you'd be welcome to say a few words to our audience.
My name is Richard Montgomery, and I'd like to thank Mayor Acuna and the council, and the pitch character, Regina, for again putting together the proclamation. As the mayor said, we've done this before, and I think this is probably my sixth year of doing this. I'm a prostate cancer survivor. I work with UCD and Marshall Hospital trying to counsel newly diagnosed men. I'm a big proponent of getting tested early and regularly, regularly meaning at least annually. It's a very simple thing that, when you do your annual physical, it's one more little drop of blood that they check. The other thing that I find that, beyond all the whereas's, in the early stages, you do not have symptoms. Once you do have symptoms, you're into that downhill side of things. The other thing is, years ago, when I was treated, there weren't options. Currently, today, there are a number of options. Generally, your GP sends you to the urologist if you're having issues, or he suspects something based upon the PSA. Urologists are surgeons. They like to cut. Then they have radiologists, and then they like to radiate. And there's all variations of types of treatment. My goal in generally dealing with newly diagnosed men is to, number one, get them past the word "cancer" in their own mortality, to say that 99% of everybody that's early diagnosed does not have a problem. It's treatable. You can move on with your life, and I won't get into a lot of the details. I've got a couple of patients that were diagnosed, shall we say, too late to do much, and they're metastatic, and -- but I've got a couple of them, they're six and seven years down the road. So, there are things that are happening in this whole agenda. Beyond that, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for your continued help and support in this important cause, and sharing your personal story, too.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, thank you very much for that. This moves us on to Item Seven, Public Comment. Mr. Marsh, did we receive any written communication this evening?
You do have some items in your--
Microphone, please.
You do have some items in your agenda tonight, two items of correspondence that you received that are noted on your agenda, one from Mr. Nicholas Nugent and another from Mr. Ken Shapiro. I know that Mr. Shapiro is in our audience tonight. I think perhaps we can address that under an item, his item, under Item 12.2, I believe, that's on our agenda tonight regarding Lumsden Park.
Lumsden Park, okay.
So, you can take note of that. The other item I spoke to our city attorney about, and he said that there was no specific action we need to take at that time, at this time on that item.
All right, thank you very much. So, we'll deal with Mr. Shapiro's letter, a little later on in this evening's agenda. All right, we'll move us on to Item 7.2, which is Oral Communication. This is the time in the -- I'm getting there, sir.
Sorry?
No problem. Item 7.2 is Oral Comment, which is the time in the meeting when citizens are invited to address the city council on non-agendized items. We ask that you limit the scope of your comments to issues that are pertinent to business of the council. Ask that you conduct yourself in a professional manner, and that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? Please step forward at your leisure, and if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record, we'd appreciate it, introducing yourself. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Jean Carol McLaughlin. I am the 2017 Eldorado Rose, a member of the Episcopal Church of Our Savior and a member of the Shakespeare Club. On Wednesday, August 21st, I had a very disturbing encounter with a Placerville police officer. That morning, I went to Upper Broadway to pray that city officials would reconsider their proposed removal of the homeless from the camp between Highway 50 and the freeway. As I was praying for some official concern for those who cannot find affordable housing in this county, a law enforcement officer arrived and informed me I could not park my car in the lot adjacent to the old Greyhound bus station. When I asked where I could park, he refused to offer any suggestion and said, "I told you where you could park." I responded, "No, you told me where I couldn't park." He then asked me, "Why are you being so confrontational?" in a very loud voice, and asked -- I asked why he was shouting at me.
And I would ask you to please just conduct your comments in a normal tone of voice.
Yes, ma'am. He then declared that I was irrational, completely irrational. On hearing that, I got in my car and carefully departed the parking lot for a safer area. I feared he would decide that I was mentally ill and hurt me trying to calm me. I reported this encounter to the city manager's office and a Placerville police sergeant that same day. I have not yet heard from the chief of police about this concern. I would like the police chief to explain what orders this officer was following when he confronted me in such a fashion. I would like the police chief to explain whether the officer was attempting to eliminate witnesses to the proposed action against the homeless encampment, or to try to provoke a confrontation to justify the proposed action. If the police chief was just carrying out orders from a higher authority, I would like the city council to explain its direction to the police chief with regard to those who suffer from the Disorder of Homelessness.
Thank you. We don't normally address questions during public comment, but we will sometimes make comments after we've heard from all of our members of the public. So, thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? Good evening, sir, if you wouldn't mind pulling the microphone up so we can be sure to hear you.
It's a joy to be here tonight. I have been a advocate like William Wilberforce, perhaps not so eloquent, for the last three and a half years in Sacramento with the Mayor Steinberg. Darrell's a good friend, and all eight of the councilmen are good friends, especially Angela, Angelique Ashby, the only councilwoman. But it's nice to see a good representation of women on the city council here. I also -- my name is Jonathan Gainesborough. I've lived in the city for 25 years. 124 homeless died last year in Sacramento. It's not a well-published fact, but it is the truth, and Darrell knows that quite well, and is marshaling resources from the state, from the county, creating new coalitions, hiring additional staff to deal with the national crisis of homelessness, which is not only national with our 300-plus million people, but it is statewide. And having 10% of the U.S. population in California, we have 20% of the homeless population in the country. Front page yesterday in the LA Times, they had raised, they raised over a billion dollars, but the front page article was that they had spent somewhere between $470 and $580 million for only 70 units, which averaged out to about $650,000 per unit of affordable housing. The front page article, if you'll pull it up and look at it, shows one of the councilmen saying this is absolutely unworkable. Now, this last Wednesday, I also had a policeman abuse me, and when I told him that persecuting the poor was sticking their finger, was sticking one's finger in God's eye, and he turned at me and he yelled, and he said, "You, you are an ugly, ugly human being." His name was Joe Wren, Officer Joe Wren, out of control. I'm glad he didn't have his finger on a trigger. I was afraid of his emotions, but back to the matter at hand. This notice of trespass was set up on the -- why that time flies so fast, on the trees on what's called the hill across from Tijuana Taqueria. I've given you a copy of the Martin versus Boise decision, a federal court decision, which says that no city, state, county, or any authority can criminalize the homeless or either cite them or move them unless there is a available bed to move them to. This is a federal Western Court decision. You all are risking Placerville becoming a precedent case for the entire state of California if you continue persecuting the homeless in Placerville. God bless you.
Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? Good evening.
Hi, David Zelensky. I'll try and talk fast. So, originally, I was going to talk about the bike trail and ask you to put some more paint on the pedestrians to the left signs and try to double them. The pedestrians are totally clueless on which side to be, so that's one thing. The automobiles are clueless that there's actually two stop signs at Wiltie and Broadway. I was watching one person try to make a left turn from Wiltie and watch three cars run the stop, you know where it is, the stop signs right next to the liquor store. We used to have two stop signs on that first one, one in the middle of the street, and maybe some new paint. Someone's going to get smashed there. All right, number three, Patty, Placerville Fire Safe Council. Apparently, the El Dorado County Fire Safe Council is very pleased with the work that Chris Keeney has done on the fire-wise community work, and apparently, it's going to be a model for everyone else. Chris, if you want to check in with her. And homeless, I'm a specialist on that. So, Monday, I hauled a homeless veteran from Placerville Jail to recovery. Today, I hauled a homeless veteran from Placerville Jail to recovery. So, there are ways of dealing with it, and so, particularly if you get a veteran, stick them on me. You know that, all right. Joe Wren is a very fine officer. I've worked with him in other situations, and I'm sorry for the situation that happened, but I will stand up for Joe Wren and for my dealings with him. And in fact, the Placerville Police Force has done a very good job at CIT training, crisis intervention training. They dealt with a homeless veteran very well on Brew Road. I was called in to help, and the police officer very appropriately gave a 30-day oral restraining order to the homeless veteran, which was right, because he was terrorizing the staff at a county facility, and explained to the staff how to do a written report so they could get, I'm sorry, maybe it's a three-month restraining order, and Chief Ortega probably knows that better than I do. So, my -- I'm not negating the experience that Carol and Mr. Gallagher had, but my experience has been that they've done a very good job, and were very professional in the situations I've dealt with, the city police and the homeless veterans that I deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the audience?
Yeah, my name's Bill Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to come in the Placerville Police Department to stay on subject matter with that. They've done a very good job out here. I have to come in. Some 13 years ago, I started looking into high-power corporation industries, everything from risk management, to the mighty self-insured doctors, lawyers, banks, savings and loans, insurance, social security, CPS, child support, special education, hospitals, specialists, unions, and to round it off, the big and -- oh, to round it off, what brought me here today is this, on this hot August night, was no particular reason, but to maybe test the waters, to see what this part of, what I have to do for this county that I love so much, so very much, and to get right to the subject of it. I just put this together right before I got here, guys. Big Pharma, fierce Pharma, and to lead off the top 10 most powerful entities on the planet I've investigated. And I've also went in-depth with the $10 billion a year California workers' comp industry. Might I add, I've also, I have, might I add-- Might I add, I've also, I have, might I add, all of this was in an in-depth investigation in an in-depth fashion, and through it all, I've came to find out that this county has a real problem, and by all means, here at home. And if I don't get busy helping out by the time the county finds out that a corporation owns the $70 billion bond, and they will be asking for their interest payment real soon.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, let's see, how are we doing? Yeah, go ahead, pardon me.
To add to the major code-red matters facing Eldorado County, definitely one, two, or three entities that have the means and power to own you, the citizens, this county within three to five years. This county has a major issue at the mental health area. Mayor's office, board of supervisors, local business, homeowners, taxes, insurance rates, insurance, and so on. Everything that's getting misled by the unwritten law that these entities that feel they are, that they can play, play the role of deities, for say. They are bad news for Eldorado County, California, the surrounding counties, America, and abroad. I'm just about to take them out permanently, but there is a but. I need everybody's help. I appreciate through high-end investigations, I operate through High End Investigations Incorporated. I've also in-depth reported on the most powerful drug Big Pharma has ever produced, Himeri, and in a child's atrocity of death from Himeri. After the maker of Himeri and Michael Teal Plus Y, Inc., put me on the streets, I have also done an in-depth investigation for you on the homeless issues that are being governed totally wrong, about as wrong as the board of supervisors giving the okay to have a consultant oversee the Eldorado Hills work that's being done on the roadway down there, at a half a million dollars. Projects upcoming, so to let you all know here and abroad, that your, that the York Specialist is here to help save the day with your help and alongside you, but I need everybody's help. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate your comments this evening. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Kirk Smith.
Good evening, sir, if you could maybe pull the mic up, thank you.
As you know, I filed a notice of appeal regarding the Sourdough &amp; Company decision by the commission, and several weeks ago, I was asked if I would consent to a request for a continuance to accommodate the city attorney who was going to be on vacation. My experience has always been, as a matter of professional courtesy, yes, you do that. But I didn't know at that time that I would need reciprocal accommodation. I have surgery tomorrow, and I'll be tied up for quite a while, it's heart surgery. And I didn't know it at the time that I had this request, because the previous doctors I had worked with had looked for less intrusive methods such as robotic-assisted open-heart surgery. So now I'm in the position where I asked for a continuance last week, only to discover, it's as usual, kind of make it up as you go along. You don't have any rules, you don't have any guidelines for your administrative practice here. They consist of about one page, which is less than the two inches thick of the federal rules of administrative procedure. In the business community, you need some certainty, you need to know what to expect. I would never consent in the future for that, because I don't know what would happen in the future, and I know that in this instance, what's cited is an obscure section of, an unusual one in your rules, which states that you have to resolve a matter from the planning commission and appeal within 60 days or it's deemed to be admitted. One suggestion to me was whether the other party would consent. It doesn't matter, it could have been presented to you. But by the time it goes through four people over a series of days, the time for the Brown Act to present it to you tonight isn't possible, so that option isn't present. You really have some rules. You know, on that side of the dais, I suspect it would only be John Driscoll and Michael Saragosa who know that with administrative agencies, you've got two distinct functions. One's quasi-judicial and one is quasi-legislative. And for six years, I described issues related to notice, and the idea that there's different rights that happen. And to this day, even though what I learned came out of a book in high school 60 years ago, I still find they don't even look at an article that was given to them by staff many months ago, which says that ex-party communication for quasi-judicial matters is not permitted. One of them, a very bright experienced commissioner, will know why it would be a problem when you simply acknowledge that it happened. Well, imagine a judge says in open court that the defense, tells the defense that, you know, I met with the prosecutor several times, and, oh, by the way, I also met with the investigating officer, but that's no problem, because I'm telling you now. Well, no, that's not the case, because as the article given to the commission members shows, it doesn't give you a chance to know what's presented, what was said, when it was said, how it was said, let alone then be able to position to respond. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe whatever I've learned in all those years doesn't matter. I've taught the subject for six years at the USDA grad school and a whole bunch of other, assume I don't know what I'm doing. But the great thing is we've got three branches, and this case gets to be heard forever before a court. I think you need to come up with some procedures where there'd be some certainty, and you know how to handle matters in the future in a business-like fashion, and not the kind of ad hoc, make-it-up-as-you-go-along kind of practice we have today. That was over six years of presenting that, which is almost as long as going over a sign issue that didn't change after eight years until you know the story. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everybody, thank you, I'll be brief. I just wanted you to know that there was another fire last week at Lumsden Park, number eight, we're all aware of it. I just would like to see something happen, we have to solve this, and I know we have other people here and stuff and busy, but I'll just, you already know my concerns, but fortunately, they were there, there was four trucks, 10 guys, they put the fire out, it was a couple acres, but I just don't want the fire to happen in our town. I drove up to Paradise last month, if you saw Paradise, you would do something as quick as possible, so please consider Lumsden Park, consider that situation, it's a priority, because I don't think we have as had many fires as we had eight compared to anywhere else in the county, so please help me, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Shapiro, you're welcome to stay, we'll hopefully get to it quickly this evening, but we are going to be discussing Lumsden Park in detail, hopefully within a half an hour or so. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville and user of Pacific Street. I think it's time to call a halt to the frequent Sunday Main Street closures, or at least limit them to the wagon train, the festival of lights, and the Christmas parade. With the increasing traffic on Highway 50, closing Main Street detours heavy traffic to Pacific Street. While the recent paving improvements to Pacific Street help a lot, it is still a narrow street, and when people are parking on both sides of Pacific Street and then walking on the street, it creates a dangerous situation. Also, Pacific Street is a main ambulance route to get from the west end of Placerville to Marshall Hospital. Lives depend on the ambulance being able to get to the hospital and not sit in traffic on Pacific Street or on Highway 50. Public safety is at risk in these clogged traffic. With the exception of the wagon train, the festival of lights, and the Christmas parade, all of these Main Street closure events could be held at the fairgrounds, with vastly increased public safety and the availability of better restrooms and increased parking. So that's my suggestion, is let's move a lot of these events to the fairgrounds and leave Main Street open. And some of the business owners on Main Street, when I said I was going to present this, oh yeah, we'll support that.
Thank you for your comment, Sue. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agenda item this evening? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. I would ask for the city manager to respond to the complaint regarding the officer's conduct on Broadway. Have we received a formal complaint?
Well, I would look at the police chief, I'm not aware of a formal complaint that's been received, but we will look into it, I will talk to the chief about it and have him talk to those parties, and we will see what went on there, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, we can't, without any formal complaint, of course, it would be very unfair to discuss the situation, I'm sorry, ma'am, it would be very unfair to you and anyone else involved to discuss the situation this evening. Please contact.
Contact with Mrs. O'Donnell. She emailed, I have had email conversation with Ms. O'Donnell in the city manager's office.
We will be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
Fine, okay.
Or tomorrow morning, Cleve will be in his office at 8 o'clock, and city clerk will be there at 8 o'clock. Both the city clerk and the city manager will be available to talk with you in detail tomorrow morning, anytime after 8 o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters are considered routine unless an item is pulled for further discussion by a council member. Are there any items for further discussion this evening? Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on an item on this evening's consent calendar before the council takes action? Seeing nobody approaching the podium, is there a motion to approve the consent?
I move, we approve the consent.
Second. Moved by Councilmember Borelli, and seconded by Vice Mayor Saragosa. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas, sorry.
Thank you very much. Consent calendar is passed. Moving on to item nine, we have no items pulled, so item 10, an ordinance to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Title 3 in Section 3 regarding regulating open fires and burning in the city of Placerville. This is an item that we've had some lengthy discussion at with both staff and members of the public and members of the Fire Safety Council, and this is the second reading. Mr. Morris, are you going to be presenting that this evening?
Yes, just briefly, at your last meeting, you adopted an urgency ordinance which affected the provisions of this ordinance. However, the recommendation of our city attorney was that we adopted it through the normal fashion also, in case we were challenged on the urgency of it. I felt pretty comfortable that it was an urgent situation, given the fire situation we have, and we just heard from Mr. Shapiro about the recent fire up at Lumsden Park, so there is an urgent need for this. But in order to follow through and make sure that this becomes effective in case the urgency ordinance was challenged, it is recommended that we waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance tonight, which will then go into effect, if necessary, 30 days from today.
Thank you very much. Cleve, is there any questions for staff at this point? All right, is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on item 10.1, which is a second reading and adoption of a fire safety regulation?
Sue Rodman, holder of Cal Fire Residential Permit 66152. And it looks, most of this ordinance looks very good. There is one problem, under 3.3.2, open fires, under C. Item 2, it currently reads, "All open warning between, within the city of Placerville shall be subject to the burn permit requirements of the Eldorado County Air Quality Management District and the Eldorado County Fire District or Cal Fire." We need to take out Eldorado County Air Quality Management District because the Air Quality Management District does not issue any burn permits. They regulate when burning is allowed, but they do not issue a permit. The Cal Fire issues residential burn permits, it is Cal Fire that residents how burning is to be done, and that permit specifies that it's only valid on days which are determined permissive burn days by the local air pollution control district, and the phone number to check is given right on your Cal Fire permit. Because Eldorado County Fire District works with Cal Fire, they are also allowed to issue the Cal Fire burn permits. I go to our local Placerville Fire Station 25, and if they have run out of permit forms, like they did this year, they send me to any Cal Fire station to get my burn permit. The station at the Eldorado Y, Mount Danaher, were a couple of the ones that they recommended. But this should read, instead of what it reads now, it should read, "All open burning within the city of Placerville shall be subject to possession of a valid Cal Fire residential burn permit issued by the Eldorado County Fire District or Cal Fire and comply with those permit requirements." And that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Sue. And just a reminder, you can get those Cal Fire permits online. That works great, that's how I got mine this year.
Okay.
Because the Y is not always convenient for folks, or Danaher Station, so.
That's true, Danaher is not always convenient.
Right.
All right, thank you for your comment on that. We will take that into consideration.
Okay, but it really does, we do need to take out this Eldorado County Air Quality Management District, because they don't issue a permit. And the way it reads now, it's very confusing, you think that you can get a permit from them or Cal Fire. No, your permit comes from Cal Fire, period.
Okay, thank you very much. You have been diligently following this process, and we appreciate your oversight. Good evening, sir, Mr. Smith, can you pull the microphone up?
Mayor, just based on the discussion about Lumsden Park, one thought comes to mind is about infrared sensors that are available by, in some law enforcement agencies in various communities. They're used in the case of looking for missing persons, whether the person's still alive or not, you can find the body within three days or so from the heat coming off, and I would suspect that could be helpful for a fire that might be out of view. I don't know what, whether we have them or not, but the county has a helicopter available to them, I don't know if it has a sensor, I don't know how difficult it'd be to get one, but that might be helpful, I don't know if Cal Fire has one. Certainly wouldn't make a concerted trip for accommodating the city, but if they're going in that path, that's one way to tell. Other communities, like the sheriff's office and Sacramento, their patrol cars are equipped with sensors that can read the license plates and determine if it's a stolen car and run it through a computer very quickly. So if you're spotting cars, that's one tool that could be helpful in an area where there's fire-prone area. That's just a thought that comes to mind.
Thank you, Kirk, appreciate it. We are on 10.1, which is the fire ordinance. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to comment on item 10.1, the second reading of the fire regulations? Seeing no one else approaching, I'll close the public comment on it and bring it back to the council for discussion and action. We've had one suggested change. Mr. Morris, your thoughts on just doing a strike-through on that one?
This was discussed at the last meeting, and the city attorney approved and stated that, last meeting, we did not have Cal Fire in that statement. We added Cal Fire to make sure that we were covered there. I understand Ms. Rodman's concerns, however, I think it still does meet all of that requirement that who that needs to qualify, how a permit needs to qualify for someone to be able to obtain one, so I don't think what we have here is necessarily incorrect. Her statement may be clarified a little bit, but I don't think is incorrect. My concern would be, without our city attorney being here, if we change that, do we need to go back and introduce again? And I don't have that answer, so.
Okay.
I want to add that this is the exact language that was used in the urgency ordinance that we changed to at the last meeting.
Very good, and I know it was important, and we did have Chief Hogan here at our last meeting, and he did say his stations do have, it sounds like Sue found out they actually did run out of the forms, so that would have been a collector's item in the future, huh? Have an actual Eldorado County burn permit from 2018. Is there any council comments on the suggested verbiage or the ordinance as it sits?
I think the conversation was also around the fact that if you had
I think the conversation was also around the fact that if you had larger than a four-by-four burn pile, there needed to be additional permitting.
Right.
And that was done through air quality control. And if that's not the case, certainly we could change this at a future date, but it doesn't, I don't think that we need to change this in order to move it forward. I think it's more important to get this going and then put that at another date.
All right, is that a motion?
I would move that we adopt, that we waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter III, Section II and III of the Placerville Code, City Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, okay, good. All right, is there any further discussion? I would just say that if anything, I can certainly see Sue's point. If anything, it maybe overstates what's going on. And if you get in the minutia, in a sense, if the air quality district says it's a no burn day, then you're not going to burn in that. In a sense, it's a part of the regulation of the process. But I think the key is that we're, the wording in there isn't creating any hazard, so. With that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please, since this is an ordinance.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Council member Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Council member Taylor.
Aye.
Council member Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, the ordinance will go into effect thirty days from today, Cleve?
It will, and actually, the urgency ordinance is already in effect and being implemented, so.
All right, thank you very much. And just quickly, thank everybody that was involved in all of these various fire ordinances. We've spent every month this year working on some form of this. And the creation of Placerville Fire Safe Council and all the hard work that those individuals do and have their own meetings and do all their own research is greatly appreciated. And hopefully, each one of these steps is helping make the community just a little bit safer and keeping the public aware that they need to be very, very careful. So, there are no public hearings this evening. Then I'll bring us on to item 12.1, discussion and action items designating Vice Mayor Saragosa to the city's, as a city's voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. I believe our city clerk has his report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So, as you know, the League of California Cities holds an annual conference. This year, it's in Long Beach, and it's being held October 16th to the 18th. And at this meeting, at the end of the meeting, there's a business meeting portion where members have the opportunity to, well, members of cities have the opportunity to delegate a voting member and up to two alternates. This year, only one council member is going, Vice Mayor Saragosa, and I hope he would be willing to be a voting delegate, but he would have the opportunity to vote on resolutions that would pertain to league policies. And so, it is staff's recommendation to have Michael Sar, sorry, Vice Mayor Saragosa attend and be the city's voting delegate.
Thank you, Regina.
That's all.
Appreciate that report. I thought he'd already put his name in. All right, is there-
He has to be official.
Questions from this council to our city clerk on this item? I appreciate him going.
I have to say-
Mr. Morris?
I was just, I was just going to say I've done it before and-
In San Diego?
It's not in San Diego. I did it in Sacramento, or Santa Z. Anyway, it's a real easy thing and you're surrounded by a hundred million people. But it's great, I mean, to be, you know, part of that group, so.
I just want to, I don't believe that I've seen yet, Regina, usually they send us what those resolutions are. Have we received those this year?
I have not seen them, and I'm wondering if they send them once we pick it, once we choose a delegate?
I think we get them one way or the other, but normally, we will bring those back to the council so that you can provide direction to Saragosa on how you would like him to vote at the conference on those items.
Can't be a free agent.
No, no. So, that's an item that will probably be coming back to you prior to that October 18th meeting where you can get that direction, so.
I had a question. Was there any need for, to designate an alternate? Is this just strictly for this convention?
No, because it's whoever's down there.
Yeah, well, I thought maybe our new council member, Taylor, would like to go.
I would love to go, but I can't.
Okay.
That's the problem.
I wanted to make sure that-
But Long Beach sounds like a lot of fun.
So, a lot.
All right. All right, well, let me open this item to the public. Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on 12.1, our designation of a delegate down to the annual League of California Cities Convention? Seeing no one in the public wishing to comment on this item, bring it back to the council for action, would someone like to make a motion? Since there's no other discussion?
I move we delegate Vice Mayor Saragosa as our voting delegate to the League of California Cities.
I'll second that.
All right, so, do we need a roll call vote? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. We will give you further direction. Hopefully, we will receive the data now for what is going to be the discussion items for this year's conference. And it is a big undertaking. We do appreciate you going down there. All right, this does bring us on to Lumsden Park. Item 12.2, a discussion on Recreation and Parks Commission's recommendation to demolish the restroom at Lumsden Park and shut off all water to the restrooms in lawn area. Mr. Ziller? Do you have this staff report? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city manager. Tonight, this is a discussion item only. This will be agendized for the September 10th council meeting, and I expect we'll have some of the commissioners present at that, but I wanted to bring it up as a point of information so you could absorb this and have your own thought process about it. So, this is a request for the review of the Rec and Parks Commission recommendation. They recommended that demolish the restroom and shut off the water in an effort to counteract the ongoing expense from vandalism of the restroom and to remove an incentive for using Lumsden Park as a campsite for the homeless by shutting off the water to the restroom in lawn area. Just a little background, over the past several years, my department has dealt with ongoing vandalism at Lumsden Park, specifically the restroom. It seems the playground and some other areas are left pretty much alone, and it's mostly the restroom that gets hammered. So, this is happening on almost a daily basis since I've been here, and this causes the restrooms to be unusable by the general public at any time. It also causes daily staff time being expended to clean up, repair, resecure the restroom. The damage is being caused by a locally entrenched homeless population that fluctuates from a few to as many as a dozen individuals. This population has been using the restroom for filling water jugs with severed water lines, sleeping in the restroom, and for drug use activities out of public view. Also, there's an area behind the restroom that provides a great hiding place for day and night activity. The irrigation system also that waters the lawn area in the front of the restroom, there's a pretty decent green lawn out there. It's also been, being tampered with and damaged multiple times. And this seems to be happening because the individuals that are camping on site regularly shut the water off so they can sleep in the lawn area and not get rained on and also turn on the irrigation system on to use as an open-air shower. The restroom has steel gates on the door frames. It doesn't have actual steel doors. And these gates have been, had their chains cut dozens of times. They've also been torn off the wall several times. Toilets and sinks have been replaced many times. Water lines have been cut and repaired too many times to count. And other activities by the homeless population around the restroom include using the irrigation system as an open-air shower, as I mentioned. We had a, we had, I had agendized this item for our discussion last week at the commission meeting, and we had three residents abutting the park that came to the meeting. They voiced their concerns about fire, taxpayer costs going to a nuisance issue, and the daily incidents between themselves, other park users, and the homeless population at Lumsden as being a pronounced problem affecting the quality of life of these residents. We had some good discussion, and the commission did vote four to nothing, or four to, four to zero with one abstention to recommend demolition of the entire restroom building in order to eliminate it as a water source and shutting off the city water at the street to stop vandalism of the irrigation system. Staff also brought up the issue of the restroom not being up to ADA code for path of travel, door widths, fixtures, and access space within the restrooms. Bringing the existing restroom up to code may not be possible considering the location in relation to the handicap parking on-site and elevation changes. So, just to reiterate, the options that were given in my staff report to the commission were demolish the wing walls at the Lumsden Park restroom. There are two walls that surround two sides of the, of the doorways that are meant for privacy, but they're used for hiding activity for vandalism. The second option was to demolish the entire restroom building. The third is to monitor the damage after welding the gates. So, if the restroom is left as is, the repair costs are projected to exceed the funding for Lumsden Park for repairs from vandalism. And it also impacts all the other facilities that we manage and our ability to provide clean restrooms and repair damage generally in the parks. We have other restrooms that sometimes take a backseat to taking care of this one because of the extent of the damage. So, the demolition or the welding could be done in-house with existing park and public work staff and equipment. So, there is no recommendation at this time. Like I said, this is going to be agendized for the next city council meeting, and I just thought we would have some discussion about this, and I'm sure we'll have some public comment, but I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Terry. Appreciate that very informative report. I will ask at this time if there's any questions from the city council for Terry on what he has presented.
I have a question.
Yes, please go ahead.
So, of those three options, just to make sure I understand what you said, you gave three options and you said that the commission voted four to zero to demolish the entire building versus just the wing walls or welding the door shut?
Yes, that's correct. There were four votes in favor of that and one abstention.
And can you give a little bit of information about why they chose that option versus welding the door shut, or?
I think that the, the discussion went back and forth quite a bit, but I think after the residents' discussion and there were, there was some mention of the restrooms being a problem since the eighties when one resident had moved in. And also, the concern had come up through discussion that if the restroom building was left in place, it still provided an area, a hiding area for drug use and other activity that's very difficult to patrol from the road especially. And it's also, it was discussed that the restroom has limited potential for future use as a public restroom just because of the location it's in. It might have been a great location at one point, but it's really off the road, down the hill, and in a low spot in the park. And if there were to ever be a restroom facility reimagined for that park, it would probably be in a much different location if it was up to me.
Okay, thank you.
Back question. Patty, did you have any questions? Return.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say that I, I do have comments, so I would like to-
We'll get to those. What I would like to do now is ask the, Jackie Now, who is a member of our Park and Recreation Commission, to please come forward and share with us the take from the, from the Recreation and Park Commission meeting. Good evening, Jackie.
Good evening, council.
If you could, go ahead.
This was a recommendation I didn't think that I was going to make. In fact, two weeks prior, I was running, talking to all sorts of staff adamant that we would not make this recommendation. However, after having an at-length discussion with our neighbors and talking about all the ins and outs, I'll tell you, I'll say there are two main reasons that we made this decision. One, those bathrooms are basically not upgradable, right? They're, if we were to do anything, we'd have to make them ADA compliant, and if you know where the bathroom sits in Lumsden Park, it's in a back corner down from where the parking is. So, when you think about just putting an ADA ramp from the parking down to there, the costs are just astronomical. When you're talking about welding the doors shut, let me tell you, there are no doors on the bathroom. We're talking about welding gates shut where things can still be thrown in there, and we would have to, in my opinion, in order to seal that building, first purchase doors that can go on the doors to seal, to seal those. I mean, it's not just a simple task. And so, you know, the, they're thirty-five-year-old, at least, bathrooms, you know? Residents talked about the conditions of the bathrooms, and that was one of the issues. The second was your neighbors. A former Park and Rec Commissioner, a former city employee were all there. Problems that they cited were, there had been problems in this park since the Upper Room opened. They cited nonstop problems since the Hangtown Haven opened because of the easy access to this park from that location. They cite being woke up at midnight, 6:00 AM, from fights down in the park. Couple of those people, when I had proposed a dog park years ago, said absolutely no way, we're going to fight you, sat down and said, "We're ready for a dog park. Anything's better than what's happening here." Your neighbors are super frustrated. They don't want to go on vacation. They don't want to leave their homes. We had an at-length discussion in areas surrounding there where people don't want to leave anything in our yards because things are disappearing from yards. One of the commissioners recently had his screen busted mysteriously. I don't know, but had a lot of problems. And, but basically, we need to focus on that bathroom. Is that bathroom worth saving? It's going to continually be a problem in its location where it hides activity behind. And even if you're a police car coming at night, I can't imagine that they want to get out and walk around a blind corner where these things are happening. It's not a great situation. I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Did the council have any questions for Jackie? Excuse me, are you the chair this year?
I am.
Let me recognize you for your continued dedication and serving as chair.
Thank you.
And yes, you were very, very much in favor of keeping the restroom ten days ago. You expressed that to me.
I did. I told you, I did not think that I was going to make that recommendation, and-
Please, no comments while other folks are speaking, please.
After listening to all of the neighbors, considering the future of what that bathroom really could be, that's why we made that recommendation.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that, while folks are speaking, please withhold comments. Shall we show each other respect here? No, sir, you cannot ask questions like that.
Like what? You didn't know what I had to say? Want me to ask you another question, Mayor? I'll ask you a question next time I come here.
Do you ask if we want to add a question?
Please, please remain in- Okay, I'm going to, the reason I allowed Jackie to speak is because she is a member of the Recreation and Parks Commission, and she's very familiar with the operation, and I thought that's nice of- Sir, I'm going to ask you to please sit in the audience quietly, or I will ask, have to ask you to leave.
I'll leave, no problem.
That would be totally up to you, but you are very welcome to sit quietly as the other members of the audience are doing.
I prefer not to.
Okay, then I would ask you to leave quietly. Okay, sir, then we will continue with the meeting. If you do disrupt another speaker, I'm going to ask you to be removed from the meeting. But I welcome you to sit quietly as the other members of the audience are doing. We conduct, this government is not fun, but we are respectful, sir. Thank you, sir. Is there another member of the public? If the audience doesn't mind, I'd like to let Mr. Shapiro speak next because he is, he has been directly affected by every one of these fires that has occurred out there. He has submitted numerous letters to the city council.
Thank you, sir. I just want to educate. I've picked up five hundred, six hundred needles out of this bathroom. We've had eight fires from people. People that are at the park or on the neighborhood. So, I just want you to know that that's what's happening there, so.
If we could just give the gentleman a moment to leave. Thank you, sir, for leaving.
Thank you, thank you.
Please continue, Mr. Shapiro.
My, my main concern is, these are all fires that are being started by people. And so, we have to do something about that to stop it. The police, unfortunately, their hands are tied with a lot of the situations. Last week, we had the fire. We know where they are. We know where it started, but they can't do anything with, with these people. So, I would suggest, Terry came out, we had some ideas, so I think a good thing to do is maybe take out the bathroom. Hate to see it turn off the water, but I guess that's the only way to do it. That might be one of the solutions to, to solve this. But I just don't want to see, it's only, Lumsden's what, about a minute away? I just don't want to see the fire burn our town down like, like anybody here. So, I appreciate you listening to me, and you know where I, where I stand. I would like to see them all out of there, those ten or twelve people, out of there as soon as possible, because I've been nice, and my wife's been nice, my sons have been nice, but we, we just want our, our home to still be there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. We appreciate your patience with the process of government. I would invite any other member of the public to approach the podium to address the council on this item. on this item. Please, if you don't mind, stating your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Carol McLaughlin, Jean Carol McLaughlin. Actually, as the report said, the problems at Lumsden Park have begun, were occurring back in the eighties. I saw a Facebook post from young people the same age as my oldest daughter and they were talking about that Hangtown game where they were using Hangtown as a monopoly thing. And they were talking about, pardon my language, Duck Ship Park. And the answer on Facebook was, can you still score meth at Duck Ship Park? My child got involved with meth. It was a horrible, horrible experience. But I can tell you, these problems did not start with Hangtown Haven or with the Upper Room. These problems started long before that.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Any other member of the public is invited, please come forward and if you wouldn't mind, state your name for the record and share with the council your comments regarding Lumsden and the suggestions that we're exploring this evening.
Thank you. My name is Jonathan Gainsborough. I've lived in Placerville, what a lovely, lovely town. We're all so privileged to live here more, having come from New York City, more than, unless you've lived on the East Coast in one of the largest cities in the country, you can only imagine. The Holy Bible and Proverbs 22, verse 22 says, "Do not exploit the poor because they are poor and do not crush the needy in court." Well, this is one of the reasons why Sacramento has legalized its illegal anti-camping ordinance. The Eighth District of the U.S. Western Federal Court decision cited the Eighth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, which we all treasure, all of the amendments, but the Eighth Amendment specifically deals with a cruel and unusual punishment. We talk about the homeless as if we're talking about them. They do this, they do that. They are not normal. They don't act like sane people. They are criminals. We tell them, bad, 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 bad. We don't want you here, go. You didn't hear us. We don't want you here, go. We tell them, we don't want you here. Would you please go? Leave the city, leave the county, leave the state, leave the country. But the federal U.S. Court has said you cannot move the homeless unless you spend your $20 million of city budget and your $80 million of South Lake Tahoe budget, your $550 millions of county, El Dorado County budget. And drop some of those million dollars, find out where that $2 million grant is going to. Open the fairgrounds, as they do in Santa Cruz, and have a multi-county support system of funding. We tell them to go, but we don't tell them where to go. In essence, we're telling them, go to hell. We're not telling them go to heaven or how to get there. When I said to Officer Wren, God loves you, he shouted back at me, well, God certainly doesn't love you.
Could you please limit your comments to the item regarding the restroom at Lumsden Park?
I said, let's put fire extinguishers in all the parks and let's find a place for the homeless to go that the decency of you all and your standard of living in this wonderful county can certainly afford. Let's do the right thing. God bless you all.
Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on item 12.2?
And these are not my first comments on Lumsden Park. Lumsden Park has been coming up on a fairly regular basis over the years. Lumsden Park has been a problem to manage as a viable city park for several years. I think it's time for Placerville to take action on this problem area. Pouring money and new facilities into Lumsden Park has had no positive results. The current proposal will at least stop or reduce the financial bleeding into this money pit. Sometimes it's best to admit defeat and walk away. I think that time has come for Lumsden Park. It's too bad, but it's obvious that this park is unmanageable as a park without an unlimited amount of resources which Placerville just does not have. Let's face reality. Sell it, move on, put the budget wasted on Lumsden Park into one of Placerville's other parks.
Thank you, Sue, for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Please come forward and if you would, please state your name for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Arnie Johnson. I've lived in this area for 29 years and as an educator of Placerville Union School District, I'm speaking as myself. First of all, in an effort to counteract the ongoing expense of vandalism restroom, removing incentive for the Lumsden Park? I don't believe that's an incentive. Without the bathroom and shutting off the water, it really is no longer a park. How can you have children and adults go there when you don't have facilities? Further, by doing that, it does not solve the real problem or the issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll close the item, public comment on the item, bring it back to the council. Now, we're being asked this evening to give direction to staff. I believe I heard Terry say that he intends to bring this back to us on September the 10th, at our next council meeting. So we appreciate all the speakers this evening and their comments and I appreciate Jackie's taking the time to come to yet another meeting and share her experience from the Park and Recreation. Is there any comments, directions to share with staff at this point because we're not making a motion on this? This is just give direction. Who would like to go first? Kara? Or maybe the vice mayor?
It makes me really disappointed to think about destroying the bathroom at a park that seems like it could have a ton of potential, but I also hear, I mean, we have been hearing about Lumsden Park a lot and I understand what the residents that live near it are going through with this continual nuisance and really a danger to the whole city when you're talking about fire hazards. One question I have that maybe the chief can address is, I think when this came up in the past and we were talking about putting a gate on the park and all different things, you had mentioned that there may be a way to deal with the problem on the private property surrounding it? And is there any movement happening on that? I mean, do we have to, do we have to basically give up on the park or can we address, you know, code violations on the private property around it and go about it that way?
So thank you for the question, Councilmember Taylor. I'm not going to answer for Pierre because that's more his shop, but I know that there's an ongoing case on, I believe it's called Lumsden Ranch, right above it, is that correct, Cleve? And we just talked about that in our staff meeting last week, so there is action being taken. However, that's not always the area or the direction that the homeless population's coming in at night. I did a CAD review in our dispatch system about six months ago to look at how many times we go to Lumsden Park. And keep in mind, these are times that are just officer-initiated. They go at least between three and six times a day, all hours of the day and night. But again, as I told somebody just earlier today, we're talking about this, let's say they spend five minutes each time they're there and many times the officers get out of their cars. That still leaves them basically 23 hours and 30 minutes throughout the rest of a day to go in and vandalize the restroom. Terry and I have talked many times about like some potential solutions since he's been here. He's been a great advocate with his knowledge of parks and crime prevention through environmental design. And unfortunately, I agree with him that the only solution is to close that restroom and potentially demolish it, which reduces an attraction for anyone to go there in the evening. I just don't see another solution. You can't gate off the front of the park because there's residents that need to get through there, so it's kind of a double-edged sword. And I know, I agree with you, I don't like to give up on a city asset that can be used, potentially be used by families and kids in another area, there's a lot of good shade there. But it's just in a bad spot. And I'm sure when Lumsden Park was designed 60 or 70 years ago, it was a completely different world back then, but these are the realities of today. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Kara. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Patty?
My comment is that this just makes me sick. Because when I first moved to Placerville and, you know, was a kid here, it was just, and Lumsden Park was created, that pond, the kids used to be there fishing and when they established the playground, we had a place, there weren't too many in this town and all the little kids used to go up and use the playground. When my husband was on the council, I remember we used to have a lot of city parties and picnics up there and it was just a joyous occasion. And this just makes me sick to think that, you know, it's come to this, but unfortunately it has. And I really do believe that everybody's done diligence with our staff and the police department. I think everybody's really tried to make this, to find solutions and stuff and it, they're just, it's just not working. And I concede with Terry, I don't see any other thing, any other way than to just shut that down. What I'm wondering is, I know Sue made the statement about, well, just sell it. I'm not too sure that we can, but I'm just wondering is if we could preserve the pipes and stuff and maybe some solution will be worked out at a later date? Maybe we would be lucky enough to get a grant if we applied for it? I don't know. I really don't know what the future holds, but to not destroy everything right now, you know, just because we're upset.
Okay, so pretty much you don't have any additional direction for staff then at this point?
Just to, I agree with him.
Okay, very good. Dennis, did you have any direction for staff and comments?
I would like to, if this, I'd like to explore the idea, since we're going down this road, of what we should be doing with the play structure there. We had talked in the past about potentially moving that to Mallard Lane and, because I know that one is in disrepair and needed replacing and this would be a viable option for that. And I know that, I've talked to more than, I don't know how many people, a few, five maybe?
More than three?
More than three, less than 10, people who have said they just don't go to that park anymore because of the challenges there. And I don't think that that playground is getting utilized there, not to mention the risk of needle sticks and those types of things that people might actually incur there. So I'd like the, you know, the staff to come back with what that would take to do that if we're going to go down this road, which it sounds like we are. I think it's a real loss. I think it's unfortunate, but I think it's also, we have to look at reality, reality of the resources that we have to spend on this between our police officers and our city staff and the fact that this is truly a community park and our community cannot use it. And it cannot use it because it's being vandalized and it's being made very unfriendly by people who, you know, I'm not going to denigrate the people that are homeless or having challenges at the same time that appears to be the challenge that we're having at the park. And so we need to address that as well. It's a resource for our city and it's an unfortunate fact that we're having to deal with this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, appreciate that. Michael?
Yeah, I think a couple of comments and I think in terms of direction. So I've had the same conversations with people. I don't think I know anybody aside from maybe the, when we stocked the pond, you know, people come out there for a couple of days to fish and do the derby, but other than that, it's just, it is a severely underutilized asset for the city for a variety of factors. I mean, even if we didn't have a homeless problem there, it still wasn't a park that was being utilized in a way that kind of makes sense. I mean, I like to look at all of our options for this park, you know, whether that's, as we've heard from Ms. Rodman, in terms of whether we sell it, whether we can, you know, affordable housing, you know, something that we could do that would actually make sense for that, for that piece of land, because I do see it as a city asset and we should, as any city asset, we should try to get the highest use of a city asset. And so I like to look at, you know, if, what are the options? Can we do something with it? Can we save it? Can we do a dog park? I mean, let's look at all these different options and see what we can come up with because what we have today is just not working. And I do think we need to move forward, unfortunately, with closing the bathroom. We have to do something. We had the fire, I mean, that's Exhibit 1A. We've had several fires, that's Exhibit 1A in terms of if we wait any longer, we don't need to have a house burned down or have the city burned down because we didn't take action to do something. It's all good to talk about it in the abstract, but it's not an abstract for the people that live around there. I certainly wouldn't want my house to be burned down if I lived anywhere near there and have to constantly think about whether or not, you know, someone's going to start a fire in the area or whether my kids are going to get a needle on them. I mean, that's not an abstract discussion, that's a real thing. And so we have to deal with that. And so I, my thoughts would be for the staff to kind of look at a variety of options. So in addition to kind of the immediate of closing it down, let's look at, you know, what we could do with this asset long-term. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I'll echo my colleagues' concerns and disappointments with the situation and also ask staff to consider looking at shrinking the park and that would be, there's currently an official unofficial CIP to move the gate. A few months ago, we had a discussion that it would be helpful to the police department and the park to limit access to the pond since it is now seldom used by legitimate folks. I don't know if that's a possibility, but let's look at it for September 10th as to, would we want to shrink the park? We have to remember that as a city, we're obligated to provide a certain number of acres of park space to our residents based on our population and size. So we can't just randomly shrink this down. We have to be careful in what we do. And I believe we're pretty close right now. So we can't just throw six acres away and walk back up Wolfsey Road and say, well, we got rid of that problem. We have to be careful what we do as a community, that we meet the requirements that are mandated on us by our planning standards. So I'm sure that Pierre will have that information for us. So I would say let's look at shrinking the park and that would mean moving the gate. I was out there yesterday a couple of different times and carefully walked around the park, noted that the Seroptimists of Placerville donated the play structure in 2000. So that play structure's got 19 years on it. Now, one of the questions I would like to get answered, is it movable? Is the equipment designed that it would be worth moving as the vice mayor has noted, out to Mallard Lane?
Orchard Hill.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, hopefully it is. It still looks great, but that doesn't mean that it wouldn't cost more than it's worth to try and move it and still make it ADA and safety compliant. So I would ask staff to look at that also. The other thing I would ask after fire number eight is I would hope that the out-of-town owners of the Lumsden Ranch LLC property, which is 200 and some acres?
125.
124, excuse me, because the park is actually only six acres. That's all we own. The rest of it is surrounded by Mr. Shapiro's property or the Lumsden Ranch folks who are out of the Bay Area. I would hope that we are coming down hard on them because as far as I can see, they haven't done anything to mitigate either of their existing fire regulations and they're certainly decades behind in our, the ordinance that has, it'll go into effect, what, next month? The fire safe, the vegetation management plan that becomes law in this city in just a few days? This 124 acres is massively out of compliance and it is putting a number of uphill neighborhoods at risk. So that would be my other recommendation to staff, to see what we're doing to get the message out to the out-of-town owners of that big, highly flammable piece of acreage. I mean, I actually know the Lumsden family, worked with one of the members of the Lumsden family, a great group of folks and I'm sure that they're dismayed at what the situation has become out there. There's a whole lot more to this park unfortunately than homeless. There's a whole lot more to this park, unfortunately, than homeless vandalizing sprinklers. There's been, there's been years of documented sex trafficking that goes on up by the pond, there's constant drug trafficking that goes on out at that park, and yes, the homeless are another element out there. So there is, there are many, sadly, bad behavioral patterns that are well documented, that have been a problem at that park for decades now. It has been a hole in the park and recreation department's budget for decades. We've replaced sinks, and toilets, and doors, and roofs, and wiring, and sprinkler controls for decades at that park. Fortunately, Lyons Park does not have that same track record. Fortunately, most of our other facilities don't. Sadly, times has changed. As Mr. Zeller said earlier in his report, he would not put a restroom, were he designing that park anew, in that current location. It is in a horrible location, for the ADA reasons and the expenses, as well as the inability to make it safe. Who doesn't want to go to someplace that is safe? I mean, that's just, that is just huge. I do have to say that on fire number eight, Cleve called me and told me it's on fire, and I knew what it was. We did have, I believe, Terry was brave enough to hike over a thousand feet up the fire line into where this fire number eight was located. I shared photos that were taken of that campsite, and it is absolutely a very sophisticated homeless campsite. They have their own signage, they have their own regulations, it is an oppressive amount of dirt work that has gone on, on this particular site, that generated fire number eight. There is no question that that fire was generated by illegal camping activities. Now, if you want to call that homeless, that's fine, because that's really who these folks were. They openly admitted that, pointed fingers at each other, he started it, no, she started it, no, we don't know who's. Fortunately, the wind was not blowing that afternoon, or we would be in a whole different situation. So we can't afford a fire number nine, and I will just thank Terry for being, taking that on, because that is not an easy hike up into there, and it is filled with needles and human waste and garbage, not only crawling through the brush and the ticks, and also Jackie No went up in that site also, I understand, so I appreciate them. So I will close my comments with that, and I think we've given staff the information that they're looking for.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Before we, just, I want to ask a couple of questions, and I'm posing these as much to my staff as I am to council to think about. My one, first question would be simply, what are we hoping to accomplish with the action to tear down the restroom? I heard, if it's to avoid the vandalism to the restroom, that's definitely what we're going to accomplish. If it's to reduce transients in the area, I'm not convinced that's going to do that, even if we turn the water off to the park. And if we turn the water off to the park, does that create more of a nightmare, a maintenance in terms of fire hazard, et cetera, that we have to be concerned with there? I'm not saying we don't do what Recreation Parks has recommended. I do think that I want to work with my staff and figure out, as many of you have alluded to, what is the ultimate answer? Because if we just take this one piece of action right now, I want to make sure we're not creating another headache for ourselves, that we're going to be sorry that we did. Again, it may be the right answer, but I think maybe we need a little bit more study to look at that, and again, what is the ultimate solution? This is, this is just one little piece, we've talked about, you know, maybe moving the playground, or selling the property, putting in multifamily housing, or something like that. There's a number of options that perhaps could work. I have a concern perhaps that with the pond that's out there, is that actually a detention basin that we are required to maintain? And if we were to sell the property, do we need to maintain that, or couldn't we sell that and require somebody else to maintain it, which I wouldn't mind? But anyway, I would just encourage you, over the next couple of weeks, to think about those questions. I will, you know, do the same with myself and my staff. I just want to make sure, this is, again, I agree with you, this is a pretty drastic action, and let's make sure if this is the route we're going, that we have a plan of where we're going beyond that to make it work going forward, so.
Quick question, is there any deed restrictions on that property?
Good question. I don't have, you're probably specifically referring to the pond, maybe?
Well, no, actually, I'm referring to either property that's been donated to the city, or has some restrictions, if it's no longer a park, it must be returned to the previous owners?
Yeah, I don't know.
Those types of things. I know in the fire district, we ran into that with fire stations.
I sent, I sent you some information that Mrs. Lumsden sent to me, and she says that there is a restriction on it. So we really need to investigate whether we can do it.
Taking into the entire look at this then?
Exactly. I'd also like to ask Cleve, further, how much further does our property go up, once you pass the pond, up into where this homeless camp is? How much?
There's not much, it's not up where the homeless camp is.
It goes over to the side?
It's kind of, I would call it to the west, I guess, behind the pond.
Oh, okay.
Behind the pond, I think we have area up there that is the city's, but it's a small area, like, say, six acres out of a total of a hundred and twenty-four is all that the city owns.
But like you brought up, okay, so if we close the restrooms, then what does that mean? We're still going to have folks going up there, right?
But then you would...
That's my point, we could have, I mean...
Yeah, well, it becomes a neighborhood park then, instead of a community park. There's different levels of parks. So I think we need to have the entire, everything needs to be on the table.
Yeah. Thank you.
Quick question, should we have a special meeting to do some strategic planning, brainstorming on this park, just once staff has figured out if there's deed issues, and if we have to maintain that as a basin, and, you know, get all the information together, and then get the ideas out?
Cleve, can I ask Mr. Zeller about his thoughts? All right. Terry, you've heard the conversations, the comments, and the concerns of the citizens, just quick thoughts on Councilmember Taylor's concern about putting it all together?
I think we can start with me coming back to the next council meeting with some discussions and some answers on the questions that I've gotten today, and I think we can move forward with a decision as to if we need to have a more organized approach with the council or the commission after we have those questions discussed at the meeting. I think it's a good way to try to get some things settled without going into a special meeting.
Thank you, Terry. Ultimately, I should go back to the Parks and Recreation Commission, for them to have a public hearing on the direction back.
We've asked these questions, though, several times.
Oh, yes, I know.
So, somebody's got to have some answers somewhere.
I'm sure Mr. Zeller does.
No, I don't mean Mr. Zeller, I mean about the deed, you know, and about whether it's a holding pond.
Absolutely, he'll get all that figured out.
He'll do a title search.
Yeah.
And the pond, whether we have to retain it, and et cetera.
All right, all right, then we've given direction to staff, we'll move on to item thirteen, council reports. Does anybody have any council member reports since our last meeting that they'd like to share this evening? I know Alaska is meeting tomorrow night, but it may have been a false start regarding consolidation of the fire districts. Michael, did you have anything from Secog?
Yeah, we had a good presentation in terms of taking, kind of what I think y'all have been working on as well, is taking old, old strip malls, and really, you know, turning them into something new and great. Unfortunately, a lot of the, I think the examples that they gave was were from out of state, and they kind of did that purposely, because they didn't want to get into some of the minutia of things going on in California, but cert, I mean, there's, they have a lot of other tools, like redevelopment, that we don't currently have at our disposal, but certainly there was good conversation about how you take sort of a dated, you know, a piece of property and what you can do with it, so there were some good discussions that came out of that. Beyond that, I'm not sure if it's ever going to be practical here in California, though, but that's a whole...
You never know, you're going to learn the magic answer to something. Patty, did you have something from the Transportation Commission?
No, we're going to meet, well, we'll meet the first Thursday of the month, next week. But what we did have today is a, I thought, a really great meeting, and I'm going to ask Cleve if he'd like to talk about what was discussed at the, with the hotspot. This is a transportation issue, our Woody Deloria was there, and I thought he did an excellent reporting job, and who we met with, and...
Well, I can speak, or you or the mayor could speak too, you were there, but whatever.
Well, I just thought you might have more detail than, you know, so...
Well, we met with Senator Dolly, was in Placerville today, and we met with him regarding the Highway fifty hotspot study. Basically, it was kind of an information thing to get to know him, but then also make sure he was up to speed on the concerns with Highway fifty, and the traffic congestion caused by, basically the traffic signals in Placerville, and, you know, what the hotspot study is looking at in terms of potential solutions, we talked to him about some potential solutions that are extremely expensive, obviously, and then some of the minor things that Caltrans has looked like, looked at, that really, I think we've pretty much exhausted all of the minor things that could be to do minimal improvements. So, we had a great meeting with him, I'm really excited to, our opportunity to work with him, I think he'll be good to work with. His experience, I believe, is a lot comparable to Placerville and Eldorado County, coming from Lassen County, as a board, a member of the Board of Supervisors there, where they had one city in the county that they worked with up there, where basically that's what we have here. They do have South Lake Tahoe also, but there's definite issues there because of the other side, so...
And he totally sympathizes with this, and he's sincere about it, and understanding.
Yes, because of the issue with rural counties and fighting against the larger counties and urban areas, so...
And he was adamant about us presenting something to him, what do we want?
Yeah.
And how he, and anytime he can help, he's more than...
There to fight for it, yeah. Yep. Good meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Patty. Thank you, Cleve. Yeah, it was an excellent meeting, we had a significant amount of the senator's time, we had his ear, he understands the rural county and rural cities just perfectly, it is his environment, but he is also comfortable getting things done in Sacramento. He has an impressive record of success down there, working as a group, rather than trying to force things through the system. So we look forward to having him as a strong advocate for us in the future. Welcoming him aboard, and certainly thanking for all the time that he spent with us today. We've still got a couple more things that we need to discuss. Placerville did deserve latest update on Placerville Fire Safe Council, are they, have they already met for the month? I think they have.
They have, and I was not able, but I got extensive, I talked to Marion Washburn, and they are, those folks are just working due diligence, and as David said, Chris is doing a great job.
Mayor, if I could add to that, I am meeting with Chris Keen and Marion Washburn next week, I believe, to talk about the guidelines that we've established, or we haven't adopted yet, do some more work on those, and also the implementation plan, they've asked to meet with me, so I'll be meeting with them on that.
Excellent, thank you, because those are going to be key to making it all happen, making it affordable and safe. Okay, request for future agenda items under item fourteen, are there any this evening for our next meeting, the coming meetings?
I have one.
Kara, yes, please.
I think we should review and update, if the council agrees to agendize this, the Main Street closures. We talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, and Sue Rodman mentioned it again this meeting, but it does seem like certainly, there are certain times of year where it could pose a public safety hazard. So...
I would support that.
I would too.
Yes, there you have it. Make it happen, Mr. Morris.
Okay, I just want to mention what I might suggest, is I had a, visited with Heidi Meyerhoff, or excuse me, went blank for another, about this very issue, and they agree, they would like to have that discussion also. What I was going to suggest is, maybe as a starting point to that, might be if the council wanted to appoint a couple of members to meet with their executive committee of PDA, because that's really who sponsors those events. I mean, I think we could maybe get more accomplished, or at least set a kind of the groundwork for where we want to go with that, and I think that might be a good way to do that, but I'm open to suggestions, we don't have to do it that way.
I'm not too sure, though, that, I mean, I think it's kind of a decision that we have, I mean, yes, they're involved, but we've got to come up with some, like Sue was saying, maybe the fairgrounds, well, the fairgrounds is really expensive to rent, and I think that might pose a...
That's why things don't happen there anymore. Yeah, the antique shelf, for example, was at the fairgrounds for decades, and then it moved to Main Street, because the fairgrounds tripled their prices, as I understood it.
My only point is maybe getting their idea of what they would like to see done, and then we can work with them on it, like I say, to find different areas and...
And I volunteer to be on that.
And they've been going through some changes, and there's going to be more changes that I've seen happening there too, and so, you know, I think...
Could you bring that back as a part of a future agenda item, Cleve? With the idea of an ad hoc committee?
To create a committee to the future, yeah. I can put it on the next agenda to assign two council members, does that work, and then we'll meet them? I mean, I think they have, this year, I think they have Oktoberfest, and then I think they, and then it's just Halloween and Christmas, or the...
We have Winderless.
Wanderlust.
Wanderless is coming up.
Next week, but, I mean, as far as, I think you're saying...
Yeah, there's one more car show.
Yeah, that's this, this Thursday, I think, is it tomorrow, I think? Yeah, it's tomorrow, the car show, so...
Let's launch the drone.
I guess my point that I want to make is, I don't think we're talking about maybe changing those events that they've already got scheduled this year.
No, 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 no.
But now's the time to start looking at for next year.
That was what you intended, right, Kara? The future schedule.
Yeah, I don't think we can.
No, 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 it would be very...
So, what I'd like to agendize then is, either, you know, that we appoint two members to meet with them and staff, and start the ball rolling, and then we can go from there at the next meeting.
Okay.
I have one thing I would like to ask. Sue brought up about how the, when the cars park and make traffic almost impossible. I have a problem with, as you, as you go around the corner up here at the Druid Monument, and you start up, you know...
Cedar Ravine up that way, or?
No, 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 the, uh, Main Street.
Upper Main.
And the brewery has since gone in there, and there's an awful lot of cars are parking on both sides of the street, and some of the folks have big trucks, and it's impossible to have two-way traffic. And I thought at one time, we talked about painting one side of the street, the curb red, or was.
It was.
I really think we ought to think about it again.
Yeah, let me answer that, you're right, at one time that was painted, however, in reviewing our ordinance, it was not painted, the ordinance did not establish it as a no parking zone.
We need to finish the parking zone.
But we need to...
Right, Sue? We need to finish the parking regulation review.
We need to bring that back, I've been working on that some more, and we need to bring that ordinance back, and that zone will be added, and it is on the new ordinance to make that no parking, so...
Three hundred feet southeast of the northwest corner of the fire block.
Well, and, you know, daytime you can kind of see what's going on, but nighttime, boy, it's just...
No, it's not safe, it's not safe on Sunday afternoons with the Tahoe traffic coming back.
Well, you're right, that.
Ask me, I know, I've been there. Okay, city manager and staff reports, thank you, Kara, for that. That'll be a fun time.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to it, because I share your same concerns, especially in the fall with the fire season in Main Street, not functioning.
And everything that's going on with the hotspot, and, you know, and...
So, this evening, we have item fifteen point one, which is a verbal report regarding presentations for the reuse of historic City Hall. Mr. Zeller, are you kicking this off?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, council, and city manager. As you recall, at the last meeting on August thirteenth, the city council had scheduled a presentation of the Arts and Culture Eldorado proposal for historic, reuse of historic City Hall. It was supposed to be at this meeting, but this meeting was delayed, we delayed the presentation for tonight, but since we put out a notice that we received a complaint filed with the FPPC, which is the Fair Political Practices Commission, regarding the RFPN proposals, so the initial move was to delay the presentation from tonight, but since this notice went out, we did receive a response today from the FPPC that, based on the complaint filed, they are not pursuing any enforcement action. So I'll leave it up to Cleve to add anything that he'd like to that announcement.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, just quickly to add on to that, we did receive that notice, actually early this morning, we received the notice that the enforcement division was not going to open an investigation on this issue, they did not find the information that justified that. However, this afternoon, we received another email from the FPPC, basically stating that at the request of the complainants, they are going to resubmit their complaint in the near future with additional facts and information. So I just want to make you aware of that. It is, however, my recommendation that we do not delay further the presentation, which we wanted to do, and that we schedule that for your September twenty-fourth meeting, which will be not your next meeting, but the one after that. The next meeting has a pretty full agenda, as you know, and so we felt it would be more appropriate to do it on the twenty-fourth. Should another complaint come from the FPPC... Should another complaint come from the FPPC, we will evaluate that at the time, but at this time, we don't see anything that would prevent us from holding that, the presentation on September 24th meeting. And we have communicated that to Arts and Culture El Dorado, so.
Questions for Cleve?
So what the FPPC told you today, do they, when they get this second complaint, is it up to them to evaluate then? I mean, they could say nay, right, that they're not going to go any further with it, or do they?
Well, they'll, they'll do this, probably the same thing they did this time, in which they, they sent a letter and said that they had 14 days to determine whether or not there is going to be an investigation, there's not investigation, or they could simply say, yes, there's a conflict. So it'll be similar to that, they'll have, they'll give us 14 days to respond, and then they'll, they'll provide their answer, so.
And that's after whenever the second.
The next complaint comes in.
Complaint.
Correct.
Okay.
Questions, comments? All right, let me go ahead and open the public comment on this item. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on item 15.1? That is the recommendation to proceed with the presentation for the reuse of Historic City Hall. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. It was the pleasure of the council. I guess the question is, Cleve, did you just want?
I don't think we really need a motion unless.
Our confirmation, just a direction?
Just your direction, you know, at this point, if you're okay with the September 24th date, we will plan on that, so.
Yeah. And I have to say that the FPPC seemed to respond very quickly.
They did.
I was very impressed, it's just, you hear various stories, and this one seemed like we provided the info, and they reviewed and provided their ruling.
Yeah, I think we planned to move ahead, as City Manager said, and I would expect we'll probably get, if there is another, that we'll have a similarly judicious and quick response from the FPPC.
Judicious, I like that.
At the end of this, I would like to know the actual cost of this to the city for these complaints that have no merit, and the fact that, how important it is during our budget process, that we, we manage our money so tightly, that we avoid giving, you know, much-needed equipment to our police department, to our staff at the city, to do their job more efficiently, and to provide a higher level of service to the city, and yet, we are, we're strapped by these, so far, complaints that are, that are without merit. And I would like at least the public to know what the cost is to the city for these people to provide these, to provide, what cost it is to the city for us to deal with these complaints that have no merit.
It's not just a complaint.
No, it's not just a complaint, it's attorney's fees, it is, it is the city's staff time, and it is, and it's the time that we're spending here, so. I would like, I would like to at least have some accounting of what this is costing at the end of it.
Yeah, we can, we don't have that at this time, because we just resolved it, but as soon as we have that information, we'd be happy to share that with you.
Thank you.
I'm confident Mr. Morris can provide that information for us, any level of detail that we request.
He's got it written down.
All right, anything else, I'll move on to item 16, upcoming items, and there are several, the important ones, so I am going to read them this evening. Our next meeting will be scheduled for September 10th. We are going to have a public hearing for the Sour Dough and Company appeal. There'll be some Western Placerville interchange Phase Two funding, permission to bid the Mosquito Road Water Main Replacement Project, which is intricate to getting Mosquito Road repaired. Happy to see that we are working on restriping the compact stalls in the parking garage, which are a nightmare. Let's see here, we are looking at ratifying a contract for the Jack Russell Culvert, which is the culvert that failed over in the Jack Russell parking lot this past winter, suffered its failure. And it's also a little fun time, we get to do the Lincoln Highway's historic highway designation signs, which that's really cool, recognizing the role that the Lincoln Highway played here in Placerville. And then I see Cleve has in here towards the end, the mural on Mosquito Road, which was always a very interesting report. A parklet report, which I saw the parklet working fine during the antique show. And then we will have the Lumsden Park restroom again on our agenda. So there being no other business this evening, I will. Yeah, sure.
I did, I worked hard at that, too. I would like to actually rephrase the one part where it's really not the Jack Russell property, and this implies that it's, it's a city property that is adjoining the Jack Russell property, so.
Being leased by Jack Russell.
Yeah, and it's, it's an important distinction, because there's some confusion as to, well, it might be some confusion as to who's paying for that, and what's happening on that.
Yeah, and it looks like it could very easily, that could be the project name for it right now.
Right.
And that would be just confusing.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, could I make one comment also about the next agenda, specifically regarding the Sour Dough and Company appeal?
Yes, sir.
Two things I'd like to mention, that we had a couple of conflicts from the appellant's and made requests. So we have two appeals on that issue. One of them has requested that we do the appeal, hear the appeal a little later in the meeting, so we will schedule that for 7:30, or a time certain, during our meeting. The second one was referred to by Mr. Smith, who was here tonight, which was a request to delay due to his health issues and surgery that he's had. I have responded to that, it came in late, too late to get on this agenda. I have said, told him what we would do, is we will put that on the agenda. The appeal hearing will be on the 10th, including his request for a continuance of that, and then council will have the option to continue that at that meeting, or make the decision at that meeting. So that will be part of that, and that will be during your regular agenda on the 10th, so.
Thank you for that clarification and additional information, Cleve.